And then the rate is the amount of tax per thousand dollars of value the taxpayers owe. So as you can see by looking at this, rural, the rural valuation increased seventeen million three hundred and sixteen thousand. And then there was growth in urban as well of three million four hundred and ninety-six thousand. And then that equated to an overall growth of twenty million eight hundred and twelve thousand. And so just some other facts that go with this is valuations are actually set by the assessor and the Department of Revenue. So the board doesn't have control over those. They do have control over the levy rate. Because those are, that is what's actually set by your local government. So another factor that impacts a budget and when you get your tax statements is what we call the rollbacks. So we put these on when we, when we roll out the taxes. And just from last year to this year, the residential decreased fifty-six from two fifty-six point four oh nine four percent. From fifty-five oh seven four three percent. Ag decreased to eighty-four oh three oh five from eighty-one four eight three two percent. Your commercial industrial remain the same and then your multi-residential actually increased to sixty-seven and a half percent from seventy-one point two five percent. And the rollbacks as well are not set by the Board of Supervisors. They are actually set by the Department of Revenue. So when you're actually looking at the levy, levies, there's some code restrictions in there. So currently right now, our general fund is at three dollars and fifty cents per thousand. And our general supplemental is limited to, so your general supplemental then is limited to certain mandated services. So, sorry about that. So you're not allowed to levy out of the general supplemental only for certain mandated services. So your, your general fund is really your only unrestricted fund that you have. So currently right now, our general supplemental is at two dollars and sixty cents per thousand. And some things that come out of there are FICA, IFRS insurance, we also pay for emergency management services out of there. As well as district court, election costs, some of those types of things. To just kind of give you a broad overview. And then our county services or our mental health services, it has a per TAPA limit. And countywide this year is at three hundred and forty-seven thousand four sixty-one, which equates out to forty-four eight thirty-seven per thousand. And that is a state-regional decision now since we have regionalized for the mental health. The debt service levy, that's a countywide levy as well, and that's at point three four four zero zero per thousand. And that is currently right now for our emergency services, communications, accommodation due, which is two hundred and seventy thousand. And that is just for this one year payment. So every year that does fluctuate a little bit based on if the obligation, the principal amount increases or decreases. The rural services basic limit is currently right now at three dollars and that is a tax for your rural only. And some things that go into that are some secondary roads, some sheriffs deputies are paid out of there as well as out of the general fund. Your road management and your environmental health. So this, this page right here kind of just shows the levy rate summary for the last five years. So just, just to kind of show you where overall the total is at. The levy from last year to this year actually decreased zero points, or zero six seven four nine cents. So you can see that. And actually, if you look over the last five years, it's actually generally de, it decreased the last four years. So the only one it hasn't decreased more than is in two thousand and eighteen. So progressively, there's been steps taken to try to continually lower the levy rates there. Um, so this, this slide just kind of goes through some of the overall revenues and kind of shows a depiction of what really our revenue sources are here in the county. So as you can see, property taxes are a little over six million, penalties and interest is thirty-two thousand, mobile options, eight thou, or eight hundred thousand. Intergovernmental is four hundred, or four million. And then licenses permits right about twenty thousand, charges for services is a little over three hundred thousand. Your use of money in property is at fifty-nine thousand and miscellaneous is at two hundred and eighty-four thousand. Um, some things that can really affect our miscellaneous is if we have any sort of, a lot of our insurance. If we have a major claim or some of those things, sometimes those will actually go through our miscellaneous. So sometimes depending on if we've had any major issues, sometimes that goes into there. And this just kind of shows you more of a visual of the breakout of those. So some people like to see more of a visual. So this just kind of shows it in a pie chart there so you can kind of see the differences. All right. So this next slide then goes through the expenditures by service area. And so these are kind of, this is the by-service area. So then I just went ahead and kind of put a description of some of the main departments that are paid out of these. So your public safety and legal services has expenses of about three million, a little over three million, which is about twenty-four percent of the overall expenses. And that includes your sheriff, your attorney, your courts, your medical examiners. And one thing with that too is, uh, some of these costs are, are more like if a court decides, uh, different services are needed for juveniles or for sheltered care and things like that. Those are things that the court orders and then the county gets to pay for for the Page County resident. So they're sometimes not really within the Board of Supervisors official control to decide, yes, we do this or no, we don't. Because basically, I'm in a court being something, that's something that, uh, we at the county just pay for because they are citizens of Page County. And the same with your medical examiner. If autopsies are ordered, uh, we've, we've seen an increase in autopsies over the last several years. And so those are something too that of course the Board of Supervisors has no authority to decide if an autopsy is performed or not. So, um, just on some of those fees. And then your health and social services is six hundred and thirty-four thousand. That's about five percent of your expenses. And that would be your public health, your DHS, your veterans affairs. Mental health is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, which is about two point seven five percent of the expenses. And that's the portion of mental health services there. And then your county environment and education, that's five hundred and thirty-one thousand, which is four, uh, for a little over four percent. And that would be your conservation, county fair, weed eradication, uh, the libraries as well. Roads is a little over five million and that's about forty percent right there. And so that would be up for all of your secondary roads expenses. Your governmental services is six hundred and fifty-two thousand, almost six hundred and fifty-three thousand, which is five percent. And that would be for your auditor, your treasurer, your recorder. Administration is one, one million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, about fourteen percent. And that would cover some, um, department supervisor, some under auditor, treasurer, recorder, IT, um, and some insurance in there as well. Your non-program services is eight thousand and that's for operations at the county farm. Your debt service is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand and that would be for your E nine one radios. And then as well, we do have a twenty-eight year agreement with our landfill. So we actually, uh, they have debt through us that they may repay us for. So those expenses come through as well on our side. And then your capital projects, that would be for roadway construction, is budgeted at a hundred thousand for next year. So once again, this just shows the expenses then on a pie chart. You guys can kind of see those broken out. So then this next, uh, chart then just kind of goes through department, the total budget for every single department. So then you can kind of see, um, the differentiation between departments and kind of where different, you know, it kind of shows your service areas, shows your expenses. This just kind of breaks it up departmentally. So I just went ahead and threw, put this on here so you guys could see that. And then as well, I went ahead and just did the fifty-year comparison. And so then you can kind of see the major fluctuations between the last three years. And so the main things from last year to this year that, um, really you could see are, um, some of these were of course your miscellaneous court ordered services, which once again, those are court ordered. And then as well, we did have public health, um, with an increase and that would be due to the pandemic. And then as well, there was juvenile court services increased and then your medical examiner increased. And so those are some of the bulk of the large changes from last year to this year. So, um, I just want to have then ended a salary comparison from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-one. So that could be seen. So this, I just broke it out by fund. So you could see from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two, the percentage of increase for each different funds and how that impacted. Some of these fluctuations are a little bit more if, um, like for instance, with public health, due to the fact that, um, they have added staff. And then also any overtime expenses there. And then as well in your rural services, that would be for overtime expenses there. And then I went ahead and did an insurance comparison from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-one. So that could be seen. Due to wellness and utilization rates, we did have an eight percent decrease on our insurance this year. Which can be attributable to many factors from, um, the wellness incentives we do and also, um, people just, um, trying to be conscientious of how they use their health insurance as well. So overall then with the salary and with the insurance comparison, um, the fluctuation between last year to this year was ninety-one thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Which was an increase of one point five four percent. So then I just wanted to go ahead and, uh, the general funds are largest funds. So it's really hard to break it down. So, uh, to kind of show the whole picture of it. So I went ahead then and I was trying to find a fund that really, I think anybody who's really interested, um, I know you all are super fascinated by fun stuff. But just so you could kind of see how, looking at it from start to finish, how it really impacts just one fund. So I picked rural basic because it's a smaller fund and it's really, in my opinion, kind of easier to kind of, um, show everything. So I went ahead then and I just showed the taxable valuation. So with that increase, with that taxable valuation, uh, there's an increase of seventeen million three hundred and sixteen thousand, which is three point seven eight percent. So then this year, when leaving that rural basic, that tax dollar request the same, because that levy is staying the same at three dollars then. You can see that the increase in dollars, property tax dollars that actually generates from last year to this year, based on the valuation increase. Or general basic is fifty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-nine, which you can see that equates out because you can see the three seven eight, the three seven eight matchup there. So then with that, it, it does impact some different things. So we do have by code, a, a, a minimum level of effort at secondary roads that we have to meet in order to continue to get our road use tax money. So with that then, with that taxable valuation change and that increase each year, that, that changes that level of effort. So every year, JD and I go back and forth on that. So I always, um, figure that the minimum, he always comes in at the max. And, um, we always, um, discuss that in the budget, which he always gets the laugh out of. So, uh, but just with the change in the valuation, that actually, um, is an increase of forty-two thousand. That by code then, the Board of Supervisors has to maintain that additional forty-two thousand to be able to hit that minimum level of effort for that. Um, and so then if you look at rural basic, the wage increase itself from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-one is an increase of eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three, which is an eight point two percent increase. However, in that for rural, there is actually an increase of overtime, um, for the sheriff's deputies of five thousand eight hundred dollars. So really only twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, that was the salary increase. So I thought it was important to put that note down, just because with that larger percentage increase, so. So then too, when you look at the insurance, that also impacts how the overall fund breaks down. So with that insurance decrease from fiscal year twenty, um, one to twenty-two, it actually equates out to a decrease of five thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars there. So then when you net those two together, the wage and the insurance decrease, it's an increase of thirteen thousand oh fifty-one, so a four point four four percent increase. So then overall then you can look at the fund and then you can see that the increase in property taxes equated out to fifty-one thousand nine forty-nine. Due to needing to hit that increase in the minimum level of effort, that takes out basically forty-two thousand of that. And then the wages and insurance, um, or I'm sorry, the wage and insurance expense increase would take on another thirteen thousand oh fifty-one. But the difference there was three thousand one hundred and two dollars. So, um, and then that chart just kind of shows that. But it does just kind of show how that all then goes through the actual fund then. So overall, just some highlights, um, for this year. Some of the main things from this year were, of course, we had an increase in public health for additional employees, overtime. That was something out of, out of really the Board of Supervisors control due to the pandemic. Uh, there has been some care funding and some other grant funding coming through to assist with some of those things. There was also an increase for miscellaneous court ordered services and those were to pay for some sheltered care, um, for Page County residents. That once again, those are, uh, court ordered. So when those happen, uh, the county, if the citizens of Page County are responsible for. Increases in medical examiner expenses. Once again, those increases consistently over the last several years. We've seen the medical examiner expenses increase, uh, especially this year. I don't know if it's attributable to COVID or not, but, uh, we did have potentially more autopsies just because. And when they go for that, those once again are out of our control. We have no ability to say if somebody gets an autopsy or doesn't. Nor do I, I want to make that call or I don't think anybody in here would want to do that. Um, so. Um, and then as well for our increase for juvenile court services, um, that is one area that we've seen consistently start to increase. So, uh, with different needs for Page County juveniles, those are things that when they're court ordered, uh, come through as well. And then of course, our increase to meet our secondary roads minimum level of effort. So, that's all I have. Can I do? Maybe you have any questions on the presentation? Yes?
Um, and it's just kind of silly, but, um, you talk about the increase, um, the, 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 the level of effort. Is that just a dollar figure that has to go into the roads or is it?
Yeah, it's based. It, it's kind of, yes, there's, there's a whole formula that goes with that. So when, um, Dave, Davey and I figure that he always was on the high end and I always go on the low end. So, but yeah, there, there's a, a factor. It's based on so many cents per thousand. And then your taxable valuations then impact that. So. Anybody else? Great. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Melissa.
I've got a question on, of the hundred and twenty-six thousand of the last hearing we had that's going up, I didn't say this then, I covered all of that. Basically, when we were in our budget hearings, it was about a hundred thousand dollars salary increase, basically roughly. Which is about eighty percent of the hundred and twenty-six thousand that were going up. If I did the math in the last one, I'd put it out. The eight percent decrease in insurance, which is a wonderful savings, how do we know where we get that next year?
We don't.
And we're playing on that. It's a pretty big thing to pay for. A lot of these things were, to kind of help cover all this. If that hadn't happened, we would be in a, pretty, pretty large, pretty different, uh, situation even where we are now. This is a lot to understand, but the, um, so we, we control levy and decide. Evaluations blow up, which I talked to Jason and next year I think they're on course with the new, with all the new appraisals going on right now to go up quite substantially again. I just, I'd like to make sure we're careful about that and try to rein this in on some of these areas. That's all I have to say with that.
Okay. Um, if there are no other questions, I'd like to have a motion to open our public hearing at six twenty-two. Would someone make that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to enter public hearing for the budget.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our public hearing is open and what we'd ask if, uh, we have some audience on Zoom. So for everybody to be able to hear your questions or comments or concerns, if you'd please come to the podium, state your name and, uh, your question. And, uh, we would entertain anybody who wants to be number one. Shy group tonight. Well, you don't have to, uh, we'll discuss some stuff if a question comes up here and, uh, you feel the urge, come on up. We did, uh, go through a, a budget process, as many of you know. This is our public hearing on the budget and this is my fifth budget, I believe. And, uh, I know there's been some concern about the level of increase on salaries. And that seems to be the, the really interesting topic to a lot of folks. And if you've been following state legislative news, uh, the Iowa legislature is looking this year at a couple of bills, one on the House side. One on the Senate side regarding the compensation boards that are in place in Iowa to help assist local governments to set salary increases for elected officials. Our conference board, uh, many of those folks have been on the board a number of years and have followed some progress and have some history. Some were new this year, I think. But they came to us after their meeting, uh, and recommended a four percent increase on, across the board for elected officials. Uh, it has been the history of our board, since I've covered it as a reporter and been on the board. That, uh, we try to honor, if we, if the budget will allow that, we try to honor that request, uh, that is put in by our citizens who spend the time, put in the effort to make that recommendation. Um, I know, I can't, I, I would ask Alan the same thing, but as supervisors, we are like, we had a rep, two representatives. And we had a discussion before the meeting, is all electants have with their particular representative on that board. And Kim Thummel and Tom Hannah are the two representatives that, uh, represent the supervisors. And they asked, they said, well, what do you think? And my response was, we've had an incredibly tough but successful year. I think that, uh, the road use tax, which we expected to drop off the table, did not drop off the table. I think, uh, if the budget will handle it, two and a half to three percent would be a good number. They came back with four. Um, and again, it's been kind of our practice to, uh, to honor that. So I don't know what your conversation with the.
Same, same basic conversation. That's yours. I don't know if Jake had any conversation with them.
I wasn't there.
That is true. That is true. I forgot.
So, yeah, Jesse, come on up.
Jesse Stimson. I was just kind of curious and I've kind of wondered with, uh, COVID and everything, has it affected, uh, tax? Or the county or the more of the city that any, any expenditures in the, or in the, or Shenandoah or any of the other towns? Does that tax money for sales? Do things go to the county or is that the city or?
It goes to both county and city.
Everything? And have we been hit that hard with COVID or have we had enough?
It's actually gone on.
To help that, I guess.
What, what you're referring to is that, that percent sales tax, the local option sales tax? The cities and the county both had increased now. And that was attributed to a great amount of online shopping. And thank goodness that, uh, our state government a few years ago finally adopted collecting from those online, which they hadn't for years. So the main street business was at a disadvantage of seven percent on any or six percent on any sale. But those dollars went up and road use tax dollars, uh, which flabbergasted.
And then as far as property tax, uh, what is, maybe I missed part of this, but property tax, taxes go to mostly what? Does it cover all just pretty much everything in the county or does it go towards a certain?
You know, the slide that kind of shows your property or where the taxes go, I mean, your pie chart on the different services.
Yeah, just like at the state level, I know our bureau is pushing for them to take, uh, mental health away from property taxes. Cover all the mental health at the state level. And so we're pushing them to take that away and have the states support mental health rather than the property, uh, taxpayers.
That push and force.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it doesn't really show breakout on your, the slide damage.
Yeah.
Um, but it's more like you can just see where you're, like, when you look then at the services offered in here, of course, those are all paid. Like your auditor, your treasurer, recorder, your sheriff, you know, all of those property taxes come back in and those are what then are used to yield some of those expenses.
Thank you. The mental health, uh, cost actually for Page County did go down slightly in this budget.
Ryan Yurkowski, I, I just wanted to address your justification on the county supervisor, uh, increase in pay. Jacob had asked for a four percent reduction in salary and Chuck, you stated that you felt the raise is justified because the supervisors had been publicly called liars and that there have been several meetings where you've been addressed assertively by the public. I understand that being called a liar is a big accusation, but we had proved that the public has been lied to. My opinion is, is that these are things that should be expected when you hold a public office position. And they are not justification to increase the tax burden on the citizens in a time when several businesses have closed their doors or had several, or have had substantial decrease in revenue. I just wanted to put my input in.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Any other comments?
Anybody online, do you think?
Yeah, anybody online, if, uh, you have a comment. Unmute yourself if you would please and announce who you are.
Wait a second. All right. Again, this is a tricky thing. When a levy goes down, it doesn't mean property taxes are going down. That's, that's so hard to look at. We're having this meeting or have to have multiple meetings because we're having an increase.
We're having what now?
We have to have multiple meetings due to the rate of increase is over two percent. We're on a two percent increase. So it's so confusing looking at this stuff. Property taxes are going up even if the levy is going down, based on the valuation. It's just confusing. It's confusing me to look at some time. And then, uh, next year I would say it's going to be with, if the levy's not, all these areas aren't looked at due to valuation, it'll go up a great deal if, if it comes back higher. So I just, that's so confusing to think about. Even when it's explained well, it's hard to, rest in mind.
How does that work?
Well, see, when the valuation goes up times levy, you have to. What you have is worth more. So if you take a time to same amount at the same levy rate, you're going to get more money. So you're paying higher taxes. A few years ago, this happened where the levy went down, but I paid more taxes. Well, it's based on evaluation and the levy was forced to go down that year because the way they changed, the way they figured the bag land. It was such an increase, there's a limit. There's a limit we can increase in the year and we pegged the limit. So when we pegged that, it, it looked like there was a decrease, but really it was just because the way that the rollbacks changed and it made everything be figured way higher. So even though the levy went down, I paid a considerable amount more per acre. And that's, it's confusing by the different departments and what you can legally do to affect that. But as we look at evaluations going up and this up there, that's just what they do. county and lower these levies to make it where we don't take any more money if we don't have to. So, we can, we can cushion that or, or fix that, I think. But it's very confusing and to do it the right way, but it is going up this year and that's the budget, we are gonna take in more money, uh, than last year, even though our levy's going down. So, kinda confusing.
And also, when you look at your tax bill, uh, it's not just the county, twenty-five thirty cents of your tax bill goes to county services, the schools, uh, and if you're in the Clarendon district this year, I've seen quite a tax hike.
Right, the school is, is considerably more than the county is. And so, when this comes into effect, the school boards need to be talked to also because they have a levy authority on their budget. And so, this is all gonna come into picture with these higher evaluations for taxes are gonna go way up.
Now, part, part of the story too here is, uh, in our local option sales tax, we have earmarked some dollars that, uh, traditionally the local option sales tax, we use it as a taxpayer relief reduction tool to the best of our ability. And we've, we've set aside about forty thousand dollars for a jail study, uh, we've set aside about twenty thousand dollars for improvements in Andy's office downstairs that are badly needed. And in another year, if those two things weren't on, uh, on deck, we could apply that directly to tax relief. And that's, over the last three years, much to the chagrin of, and, and it's a tough call, our, our daycares, we have, we started out three years ago by reducing in half the contribution we make to our, to our daycares in the county, which was difficult, and now it's down to zero. Uh, so we're, we're trying to be really more selective as a board on those local option dollars to have, to get the best bang for our buck and how, how can we earmark more of those core property tax relief? Any other comments?
Mitch Gersky.
Yep.
Um, just curious, I'm a simple man, I don't understand all the members and all that stuff and that's why you guys do what you do. I'm just curious, when, I'm not one who's against raises, I'm for raises. What do you base, and maybe you've already said this, and I just need simple terms, what is your four percent based on? I mean, is it, is it similar to counties around us? Is it similar, what's, what's the pay increases in other counties of Iowa? Am I making sense?
Yeah, you're making sense.
Are we in line, are we more, are we less, and, and?
It's all over the board. Mitch, uh, Fremont was the highest, I think it was at five percent, and I'm not sure, I can't remember what family ended up at. Montgomery ended at three, maybe?
Three, I believe.
But that's part of that compensation board process, they have, the code tells them what they can do and what they're supposed to look at for comparisons. And there's been a movement in the last few years, instead of, the traditional way of thinking by our compensation board has been, we're the fiftieth ranked county in terms of population, so our elected should be at the fiftieth percentile, which the code really doesn't say that. And it, and if you stop and think about it, that's not a reasonable thing because a county the size of, uh, Page County that exists in northeast Iowa where the economy is extremely different, you can't, those aren't apples to apples. So, what they've tried to do more is to take the southwest Iowa counties and, and take an average, and in that average, we're, you know, our, our tax asking is a dollar, and I don't have the number in front of me and I'll misstate it, but well more than a dollar, dollar eight or dollar nine below the average of thirteen southwest Iowa counties on the tax asking. And we have counties with assessments greater than Page County's less than Page. So, it's, it's a moving target, is probably the best way to tell you.
Are the salaries that we pay our elected officials, and maybe you've answered this, are we in line with, with where we should be, are we trying to catch up, are we? Help me understand where they are with that.
The elected officials, I think if you ask them, uh, they think that they're underpaid.
Underpaid.
I think, and, and I think you, you look at, like our attorney, for example, uh, I think Carl was probably put on the scale the lowest paid, maybe not, okay, I missed a lot.
I mean, the sheriff, uh?
Okay.
Sheriff sixty-seven, sixty-eight is that?
The sheriff and the attorney are the two that are, that are behind. But again, those are against economies that aren't really apples to apples, in my, in my view. If you go to Decorah, Iowa, and the counties are out there, the economy is robust compared to our economy. So, taking that population out of the mix, I think is important, so honing down. But yes, I, I think, uh, out of the supervisors are, are probably closer to, and maybe we probably are a little bit above. However, the thing that I think is important in justification of, of the supervisors, uh, we and, and as the electives too, there's no overtime, okay? You, you work flat pay, and we look at the overtime numbers of the sheriff or the overtime numbers of our twenty-four seven operations, and that really does skew that number. Uh, it, it takes away the ability to go compare to, compare straight to compare, if you know what I'm saying. So, um, it, it's moving target, a lot of variables. Is four percent right? I don't know, but I can tell you this, in all my years of watching an organization move at any level, our people worked harder and more efficiently this year than I've ever seen county government operate. COVID was unbelievably challenging and I'm here to tell you, we made a lot of decisions, many of them were, were wrong, many of them weren't right, I don't know, but we got through and on the front end of COVID, we had financial institutions just on our tail because the, the refi market was at historic lows and, and they couldn't, they couldn't stay ahead of it. And our recorder, our treasurer, our electives, they did a fabulous job transitioning, so, and I, I'll stand by employees, I mean, all this hope that our organizations, uh, are, are the greatest place to work, we want our employees to have pride, we want them to say, I'm proud, I worked there. And, and you don't do that by, you know, limiting raises, when you give them when you can, and four percent's more generous than what I wanted. But I, I, I admire my, I mean, I, I respect what that process is with the compensation board.
If, you know, just for clear communication, the question comes from, you know, it's not very many people who get to budget, and excuse my language if I, if I'm wrong, not many people get to budget themselves a raise, and so it raises questions and, and so I think it bears asking. Did we take into account, like the sheriff, those who were lower and those who were above and say, well, maybe this person can get a, a little bit more of a raise and these areas, maybe, maybe they can be considered in the future? I mean, was that in the conversation?
The compensation board did not, and, uh, the reason being is that when that has occurred in the past, it has created a lot of strife.
And I can see why.
However, the other, uh, authorities, Conservation Board, Board of Public Health, EMA Board, who all, and the Veterans Affairs Board, they have control over their budget decisions with regard to, I think our, uh, our Public Health Director got above that, our John Schwab back here, Conservation got above that, but ins, inside those decisions are many other variables that have never spoken. In the case of Conservation as an example, uh, two years ago, we had a long time, a long tenured employee who had been here a number of years, who was a co-director, who retired. They bring a guy in, had a lower salary, and they say, okay, here's the job and here's some incentive and some marks, and so when you look at it from a percentage basis this year, it's like, wow, how do you get such a big raise? Well, that's how that happens. And, and that's not unfair, I don't, I personally don't think, I think you have to operate business to attract quality people and retain quality people.
I have concern that if we, if insurance goes up next year, and we've had a four percent, I can't have my paper with me, how many years has it been four percent or three point seven five, it's been several years in a row here, year on, year on, year. I don't remember how many years it goes back that way, but next year, what do we do next year if insurance goes up, everything goes up, and then they want, if there's a recommendation for a four percent raise and insurance goes up eight percent?
Is that a pretty big jump? Oh, thank you, Mitch.
Thanks, Mitch.
Well, Jacob, to that point, I, I would say, uh, I agree, that, that could be potentially a very difficult thing, and, and that's another reason, right or wrong, why I support the four percent. I think that next year, uh, some of the things that we feared for this budget year that did not occur will likely to occur. And so, you look at the organization and our people worked harder, I think, this year than any other year. If you don't give them a good raise, and now next year, you're unable to give them a good raise, now you've got two years running. What does that do to your morale? What does that do to, uh, how your people operate? That's just, everybody's gotta throw an opinion on that, but that's how I feel. Any other comments?
I'm Mike Howard, and I'd like to start by saying I appreciate you guys being flexible enough to have meetings where people can come to them, I appreciate that. My question is about, uh, rock roads. I don't know what a secondary road here is or a primary road. I live on a rock road and it's probably just hearsay, but I've heard from several people here a month or so ago that there was no more road rock in Brandyville. I assume that's changed because there's rock showing up on the roads, but do we have a contingency plan if Brandyville runs clear out of rock? There's only so much rock there.
You know, I would ask you to visit with JD about that and the specifics. We were told this morning that Brandyville is indeed out of road rock and, and probably won't have any road rock for another three weeks. The, uh, wind operation in Taylor County is consuming all they can produce. Uh, the rock that we're getting now is coming from Stennis and, uh-
Morning.
Morning. And I just wonder because there's only so much rock in the world and when it's gone, it's gone. What do we do then?
Well, I appreciate your comments, I know that, uh, the roads are, we had a, a really good discussion this morning about the roads and, uh, I hope that we have more discussion because together we can figure out how to improve what, you know, we, we focus on the bad stuff and, and the roads right now aren't very good, but we do, we do overall with nine hundred and thirty-some miles, our men and operations do, do a really good job. Thank you.
James Simpson, uh, that's kind of the subject I'm interested in, I listened to the deal this morning and, uh, and I had heard the rock was gone and our road really needs rock, and I'm personally gonna need rock. Of course, we usually, we live close to Brandyville, so that's where we go get our rock. So then it got me thinking, how does it work? Do, does the county, um, the county is in competition with the wind turbine companies for rock, is that right?
Well, I, I guess you could look at it that way, we, yes, we need rock and they need rock and there's only so much rock, so.
Do we have?
I don't think we have a contract on any law doing JD with Brandyville.
We don't have a contract with that for access on the block. He doesn't know how much we anticipate using for a year.
But they don't save it for you. If somebody else is gonna pay for it, they're not saving you that.
Their rock in the quarry is just in the shelter here, it's not, I mean, they're scripted, they have it shone and, and right. We're waiting because they don't have enough proof to be everywhere and all the things up.
So, when you see another wind turbine, uh, project coming on, you don't say, hey, we better speak for some gravel for our citizens? You don't do that?
No.
Is there, seems like that would be a good idea. I called down there to see how it works, I'm like, I'm sure you're a business, you're gonna sell to whoever asks first, first come, first served. Does the county have a contract? They said, they think about how much they want for the year and they'll get it and put it in their log. I don't know if that's true. I just, as a citizen of the county, I'd like considered somehow as much as the wind turbine companies are considered.
They have more money than the local department.
So, they pay more for the gravel?
They didn't say that, they said they have more money.
We probably could look into booking some rock in anticipation, that's not a bad idea. There's piles down there you can't touch, by haul rock all the time. People will have special rock made for asphalt and things, and I would love to buy some and they won't ever sell me any.
They won't?
It's real pretty clean, half inch rock, and I just want low, no, they won't sell it, so that probably is a pretty good idea.
We, we gotta do something different because we're, we're graveling cornfields and our roads are mudding.
Jesse, Jesse Simpson again, so I was kinda curious if we, uh, have to go elsewhere to get gravel, so then do we hire, do we subcontract to have trucks come up, bring gravel from Savannah and different places?
Sometimes we contract the wall all the time.
Yeah, and so, um, it's gonna ca, cost us a lot more fuel to go get gravel elsewhere, is that correct, rather than Brandyville?
Yeah.
And so, and it's probably quite a bit more because of the mileage that you have to go, but maybe not, I mean, you're going to Corning and you're getting gravel all over the, but, so I guess that's one thought I just had pop into my head was, well, if Brandyville ever runs out, then we don't have access to that, and so we're gonna pay a lot more in, uh, our tax dollars towards fuel to go get, uh, gravel, so, but.
Hey Jesse, may I have one thing on that topic? We, we've, uh, heard from some of our taxpayers about the quality of rock that we get out of Brandyville as a result. We are doing a study with weeping water, rock and another to see, because we assume that because you have to haul it twenty additional miles, it's more expensive, we're gonna prove that either right or wrong.
Okay, and I've heard that Brandyville rock is not always top tier, so, so I'm just curious, not.
Thank you.
Joe Justinson, uh, this might be a very short-term possibility, but just maybe a suggestion you guys could consider. Uh, the, the lay down yards from the wind turbines are picking up and cleaning out in some locations. They got lots of rocks in and out there that are really clean, really ready to go, I don't know if that's a, not, not, I'm seeing a shaking, no. Is that a consideration? I know it's significantly cheaper, um, but the quality's there, is what I've been told. What's that? The, the lay down, lay down yards for the wind turbines? Right out here on Highway Two toward Bedford?
Oh, the one out on-
The gentleman that has that wall has contacted me, has contacted the state about it, and it's not, from our standpoint, it's not a regular wall, as the wall he has right now.
Okay, well, things I don't know about, I just thought I'd throw it out there as a possible solution, so.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Any other comments? Maybe we could start a quarry, I think we could all make money. Yeah. Well, hearing no other comments, uh, I would entertain a motion to close our public hearing at, uh, six fifty-one.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing for the budget.
I'll second that.
Motion made to second it, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, uh, time to discuss and approve the budget resolution and FY twenty-two budget, uh, I'm ready for a motion.
Do you need those all listed out separately, Alyssa? Alyssa, do you need those listed out separately in a motion? All three, plus the, or just the, or just the discuss, approve, or just approve the FY twenty-two budget? I'll make a motion to approve budget resolutions, number sixteen.
I'm gonna do the budget.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve budget resolution. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve budget resolutions, number 16, 17, and 18 for the year 2021.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, any other discussion? This is for...
The budget amendments.
Yeah, those amendments, right. All right, uh, hearing done, let's roll call that, please.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes, sorry.
Holmes?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 budget.
I'll second that, first. Okay, we have a motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, any other discussion? Do we have a roll call, please?
Armstrong?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Martin?
Yes, like on the record, it's based on, I believe, 4% raise is too much this year.
Okay, motion carries two to one, and duly noted, the dissent is regarding the 4%. They'd like it officially increased. All right, uh, who's gonna present the ARCA? Is that you, Brenda, or is that you, Melissa?
That's you, yeah.
Brenda, we'd like, we'd like to have you stand, you've been sitting too long.
Yeah, come on.
Come to the microphone, please, your favorite place. Bring up Angie with you.
Um, I guess I could kind of explain the ARCA search.
Bring it down a little bit, please, I'm sorry, not gonna get you off of the...
On the ARCA search, we, um, I guess back it up. Every year, we have, we pay $6,000 to $10,000 for preservation of our books. And this year, we decided that we would go and digitize our indexes. So you can go back and, if you're at your desktop, you can go in and you can look at all of our indexes. Like, I know some of us have wanted to know if there's an easement. You know, we've had a lot of easements going on record, so you can go in now and you can search those at your leisure. Um, Melissa has added some of her records. And then, um, I have a fund that we, it's in the code that we pay when you record a document. We have an extra amount that we put towards this fund, it's called the Record Management. And I've just kind of been holding that money for, you know, you can use it to hire somebody else to come in and scan your records or do it, but I've held that money. So I put towards this project $22,000 out of this Record Management, so we could get our indexes online, and then, um, we kind of broaden that, and we're gonna start putting these on record. It kind of is a dual, there also is a preservation with this. Because when we had the fire, all of our records were microfilmed. I don't know, I, we hope they're legible if we ever have to go back and look at those. But now we have this, it's, you know, offsite, stored offsite, so, you know, and, and these researchers that are from other towns, states, um, they, when we were closed, you know, with the COVID and we wasn't allowing people to come in to search, now this is gonna be a possibility, if the more records we get online, that they can, they can get these records. And hopefully, they'll, we can also put a tool in there that, maybe they can pay for a user fee. So, you know, we can generate some revenue that way, so we can get more records. So that's kind of what we're doing, um, in the Recorder's Office, um, kind of a pitch up speed, what we're doing. Um, I think it's gonna be good that eventually, if those records, um, when we had COVID, some of the counties, they had like 40 years already on record. So they can go in and, and continue to do their business. And it has been crazy with buying, selling, refin, so, um, that was a, that was a, you know, it'd be a really good resource for them, so. Anyway, I don't know, did that answer?
It, it does, just one quick question, with what you intend to do this year, what, what's your projection on how long it's gonna take you to get them all digitized?
I don't know, Chuck, there's a lot of books there.
I know.
Um, but with this, um, we can do 40 books. So hopefully, every year, we can put so much towards it to continue this process, um, but...
You're, you're moving forward on it.
Yes, we are.
Any other questions from Brenda?
Thanks.
And, and these dollars were, uh, talked about as part of our local option sales tax when we had our budget worked on. So if we could have a motion to approve those agreements, I appreciate it.
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the ARCA search agreements.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, any other comments, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, we had our public hearing, but if there's anybody who has any additional public comment, now would be a great time. We thank you for coming, this, uh, when, uh, Mr. Holmes came in, he talked about having, uh, evening meetings, and this will be a regular, uh, event here on Tuesday evening, second Tuesday of the month. Uh, and then as COVID subsides, maybe, uh, we would entertain additional locations or additional dates. But, uh, you're welcome to come to any of the morning meetings or to our second Tuesday meeting, or always online at Zoom. With that, uh, we don't have any minutes to approve, so if we could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion made to second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.